I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'll ask the Honorable Mayor Bobby Hernan to lead us in our invocation and right from our prayer, we'll go right into the pledge.
Please stand. As we pray tonight, I know a couple of meetings ago, we were here, we were honoring Paul Hubbard, out of our Civil Service Board. Where tonight, Mr. Paul was fighting for his life at UAB Hospital. He was in a terrible car wreck on Saturday. So if you will, please keep old family prayers. Not looking good, but please, keep him in your prayers. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this time that we can come out and discuss the business of our great city. Thank you for blessing us in so many ways. Thank you for the officials that are here today. Give them wisdom, give them guidance to make the best decisions for our city. As always, we pray for protection for our police, our fire, for everybody that works for the city of Northport. Lord, just be with our military, be with our leadership from the President, all the way down to the mayor, city council of our great city. Just thank you for loving us, thank you for blessing us. These things we ask. Amen.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think the microphone is, it's not coming on.
Alright, we'll let it is on.
Okay, yeah, we had to play with it.
Yes ma'am. Mr. Collins, call roll please.
Councilwoman Hayes. Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Councilman Acker.
Here.
Councilman Harper.
Here.
President Logan.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. President. Typically, Mayor Hernan gets up and does these presentations, but this will involve the mayors and members of council, so just as we get started in the meeting tonight, some of you may know that this is Councilman Acker's last night on the city council. Steve, we got a plaque for you, if you wouldn't mind coming down and standing for just a second. And then we'll need the other council to come down in just a minute. Very simply, it just says, presented to Steve Council, Steve Acker for your, Steve Council, he might as well be a council for all the work that's gone into it. Presented to Steve Acker for your dedicated service to the residents of District Four in the city of Northport, Northport City Council, 2008-2015. Which will tell you, thank you. I know that there are several members of council who've served with Steve for a long time. I see Steve Webb, former Councilman Webb, who was here. And on behalf of the city, the residents, and the staff, we just want to say thank you. I know a lot of, a lot of times, city council doesn't get the credit they deserve for the work that they do. But I can tell you over the last nearly seven years now, the city of Northport's gotten a lot of credit for moving forward and trying to do things the right way. And you don't see the work behind the scenes. And I can tell you, and I think the council mayor will back us up, that Councilman Acker has been a real driving force in making sure we get this city headed the direction that it is today. So for me personally, I just want to tell you thank you. As a citizen and as an employee, I just want to tell you thank you for all you've done and give you a chance to speak and tell these gentlemen, let them have a chance to say the same thing. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you Scott. I asked Scott not to do anything, so I see he fell right in line with what I tell him all the time, so. Yeah, y'all know.
Civil service, civil service.
But I do, you know, the cities came a long way, I believe, in the past seven years, in a lot of ways. And I appreciate the support from the previous council that I served on and this council also. And a lot of credit goes to the staff also, you know, the police department, the fire department, they've just, what I saw seven years ago and what I see today is night and day difference between the two, just like the rating we just got today on the fire department. I remember when, I don't know if you do Chief, but when we were worried about it being a five, in very seriousness, and it ended up being a three, which is great for this city. But we just have a great staff. I've enjoyed working with them, made a lot of friends, acquaintances. One thing on Scott Collins that, you know, the thing I hear a lot is that people want to get on Scott Collins about he runs the city. Well, I'm pretty sure when we hired him, seven years ago, we hired him to run the city. And Scott, I appreciate the job you've done, very much so.
No, thank you.
So having said that, I hope I haven't missed anybody. Brooke, where are you at? Stand up. She gets called out all the time, but she keeps the grass cut and has pulled me out of many fires. Y'all give her a hand. She's a good. I'm not leaving without doing that. But thanks to all the staff, they're all great. You know, I won't stand up here all night, but I can leave this city knowing that as far as I know, I don't have a core with one person that works for the city of Northport. And I think that's pretty good. Thank you.
I'll be even shorter. I know when Steve and I got elected, you know, everybody who's elected official, I see Lorenzo and Steve, you know, we come in this job thinking we know everything, but really you don't until you open a budget up. And all our eyes got big as saucers when we got slapped with a budget that we just had to work with. And I will always appreciate Steve's honesty, his straightforward approach to problems and try to find solutions. So he will be surely missed from my standpoint. I call him the John Wayne of the city council, just because he's gonna shoot it from the hip and we're gonna make a decision, we're gonna move on. So Steve, I appreciate you. I know you got a supportive family, that means a lot as elected official. If you ain't got a wife behind you, your job will be very difficult. So I appreciate you, your family being with you all those years as a public servant. So again, I'm gonna miss you as a fellow public servant. So again, don't be a stranger. If you want to serve on a board, we have one vacancy open. We have a ZBA, I think, or planning and zoning. Sean, I think we gotta, we'll try to use you. So, thank you Steve.
Yeah, we'll happily put you on PZC. That'd be great. Just real quick, Steve, it's been a lot of work the last three years, and I just really want to say I appreciate everything. You're a good friend. Glad I got to serve with you and I wish you the best.
A lot of it's been said, Steve, I want to tell you thank you. City councilman, friend, will go back a long ways. And the thing that I'm gonna miss most, and he's probably not, is the phone calls that I make during the week, getting help on these decisions. I learned a long time ago that when you, when you don't know anything, or don't know something, or don't have the answer to it, you try to find somebody that does. And he always had the answer. He's a guy that you want, that, if you wanted somebody in your foxhole, it would be Steve Acker. He's a man that's honest, a man of integrity, a man that can get problems fixed. And we're gonna, we're gonna truly miss you.
I'm gonna miss Steve too. He's helped me a lot the last three years I have served on the council. I call him my go-to man because any question I have, Steve can answer it and is more than willing to help out with anything that I have questions about. He told me some months ago, he said, "You might not like what I say, but this, this is what, you know, I believe, and this is the way things are." And I appreciated that because I want to know what is, what are the right things to do, or to just, you know, know exactly what the council is supposed to do. So I appreciated that, and I'm definitely gonna miss him. And I just asked him if he would continue to be my go-to man, and he said yes, so that's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep my fingers crossed on that one. Thank you Steve.
Well, I try not to cry. Now, first time I met Steve, we were campaigning in '08, and both of us were heavier than what we are now. Steve's done a whole lot better job keeping his weight off than I have, but I met him, we were knocking on doors, I ran across him, first time I met him, and he impressed me right off the bat, and we've become great friends. I guess we weren't gonna surprise you, but we're annexing Northside into Northport, and that way you can stay on the council. Not really, for the news folks, we're not really doing that. But anyway, you know, when we came into office, and I've said this many times, you know, seven years ago, we got sworn in, immediately found out we had three weeks' worth of money in the bank to operate the city, and that was it. And the decisions that Steve and the first council had to make to put us where we are now, it's just night and day difference. He's a great friend. He was never scared to make the tough decisions. We had to do layoffs, we had to cut agency funding. Though we didn't like it, you know, Steve said, "Whatever's the best thing for the city." I love him as a friend, love his family, and we're gonna miss him. And Steve, God bless you, buddy.
Item five is approval of the agenda. I will make a motion to approve the agenda as printed. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Acker.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 7A1 is a second reading of an ordinance ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at 2302 Deer Haven Drive. Ms. Gay, you gave us a brief synopsis in the pre-meeting. Staff has already made contact with the owner. The owner has started the improvements to the structure, but we're gonna go ahead and go through the demolition process, and then if the owner contacts us as such, and everything's on the up and up, we will consider the matter closed. Is that right? Do I have a motion to approve that ordinance ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at 2302 Deer Haven Drive?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Harper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Acker.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 7A2 is a second reading of an ordinance ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at 201528 Street. Ms. Gay, same process, is that correct? I'll make a motion to approve that ordinance ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at 201528 Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Acker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under new business, item 8A1 is a first reading of an ordinance ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at 1609 12th Street. Ms. Gay, same, same process, this is just first reading. I'll make that first reading. Second item is a first reading of an ordinance ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at 1211 Bridge Avenue. Ms. Gay, is that same process? Thank you. I'll make that first motion for a first reading. Item 8A3 is a first reading ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at 1710 17th Street. Ms. Gay, same process. I'll make that motion for a first reading. Item 8A4 is a first reading authorizing a conditional use for a group home located at 3421 24th Street. Ms. Gay.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. In our zoning ordinance, anytime we have a condition to use for group homes, it has to go before our planning commission, and it went before the planning commission, and they gave it a favorable recommendation to the city council. And it is a group home which will allow three unrelated residents in the home, and it's coming from the Department of Mental Health.
Thank you. Do I have a offer for a first reading regarding the item on 8A4? I'll make that motion for a first reading. Item 8A5 is a first reading of an ordinance amending chapter 70, Article 8 of the municipal code. Mr. Davis.
Yes, Mr. President, this is first reading only. This regulates the towing of automobiles from private property, so it would give required notice to the individual as to where they could find the automobile, also notify the police department. This is in addition to the existing article on towing of vehicles, but this only relates to private property.
Thank you. Do I have a motion or an offering for a first reading regarding 8A5, Chapter 70, Article 8?
I'll offer that for a first reading.
Thank you. That's a first reading offering by Councilman Sullivan. Item 6 is a first reading of an ordinance amending Section 66-285 of the municipal code. Mr. Davis.
Yes, Mr. President, again, this is first reading only. This is a proposal concerning the regulation of food trucks and how they should be allowed and where they should be allowed to operate.
Thank you. I'll make that offering for a first reading regarding the sixth item, regarding Section 66-285. Item 8B1 is a resolution approving the 2016 general fund and water and sewer fund budget. Mr. Collins.
Mr. President, members of council, Mayor Hernan, as you're aware, we've done some budget work for 2016, a little early this year. We had a work session on September 10th to go over the general fund budget and the water and sewer budget. We made some general presentations to you at that time, and what you have before you tonight, as we discussed in the pre-meeting and in part in the meeting on September 10th, were the proposed budgets for 2016 for the general fund and water and sewer. That's what I have presented to you tonight for consideration by the city council.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve that resolution approving our 2016 general fund and water and sewer fund budget?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
That's a motion by Councilman Acker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Thank you. That's a comment or discussion from District One, Judy Hayes.
Okay, the only information on this budget was provided to the council members in a short work session after the interviews for candidates to replace Steve Acker. The council did not hear from many of the department heads or outside agencies. This process should have been conducted over several months so that there was adequate time to hear from those who were affected by the budget. Something of this importance to the city that involves so much taxpayer money deserved much more time. The budget was presented within 10 days of the presentation of the audit. The audit was supposed to be presented publicly before the council, when minutes were being kept and made available to the public according to state code. The audit has not been widely made available to the citizens of Northport. I request that the audit be placed on the city's website and left there until a new audit is available. I cannot in good conscience vote on approving budgets tonight. I'm asking that the vote be postponed until the budget is presented with adequate time to study it and for input from those who are affected by it. And also after taxpayers are given access to the audit.
Alright, we have a, make sure I clean this up correctly. We have a motion by Councilman Acker, a second by Councilman Harper. We had discussion on the floor by Judy Hayes, Honorable Judy Hayes from District One. And I will say for the record, the audit is totally separate from the general fund, so I think that was a matter in the previous council meeting that we had. And then I, and Councilwoman, let me make sure I'm clear. Are you asking council to postpone the vote for general fund and water and sewer? If so, that has to be in a form of a motion, but I've already got one to approve it from Councilman Acker and Harper.
Yes.
Okay, so Ron, what I'm gonna do now, we already have something on the floor, so Robert's rule is gonna take an effect as far as my motion and my second already, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, for the record, we've got a motion by Councilman Acker, a second by Councilman Harper, discussion on the floor by Councilwoman Hayes of District One. We already have a motion and a second. Are there any further discussions? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
Councilman Acker.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
No.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item two is a resolution authorizing our mayor to enter into an agreement with the Tuscaloosa County concerning Northport Tuscaloosa County rescue runs. Mr. Davis.
Yes, Mr. President, this is a contract between Tuscaloosa County and the city of Northport to provide medical emergency rescue runs in a portion of Tuscaloosa County, just generally the area west of Highway 69, north of Highway 82. The county has already approved this agreement, and if this council approves it, it will become effective on October 1st of this year. The city will be reimbursed by the county for these runs.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on the floor to approve that resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Tuscaloosa County concerning Northport and Tuscaloosa County rescue runs?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Acker. President Logan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The third item is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Metro Animal Shelter Task Force for Animal Shelter Services. Mr. Davis.
Yes, Mr. President, this is again, ready for vote. This is, as you recall, we entered an agreement with Tuscaloosa County, the city of Tuscaloosa and the city of Northport concerning the operation of the Metro Animal Shelter. This was bid out. The city's percentage is, the cost is based on usage, and the percentage is down a little bit for Northport, 9.3%. So it's ready for vote by the council tonight.
Thank you. I'll make that motion to approve that resolution requesting the mayor's office to enter into an agreement with Metro Animal Shelter Services. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Acker.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Fourth item is a resolution authorizing our mayor's office to enter into an agreement with ALDOT for installation of signal optimization systems. Mr. Swan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Enclosed in your packet is a, an agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation. The department plans to install signal optimization system on their major routes through Northport, Tuscaloosa, and Tuscaloosa County. For Northport, those routes will include McFarland Boulevard, Highway 69, and Lower Lane B Wallace Boulevard. The, the department will install equipment along these major routes at signalized intersections to gather data, or operational data that will be analyzed by the University of Alabama, so that we can improve signal operations and improve traffic flow. The, the most important thing about this agreement, I suppose, Councilman Acker, is that it's not gonna cost the city anything. So we would recommend that the city authorize mayor to enter into this agreement. Mr. David Kemp with Alabama Department of Transportation, our regional office, is in the audience tonight if you have any specific questions for him about this agreement.
Any questions of Mr. Kemp? He's in the audience from council? Alright, do I have a motion to approve that resolution authorizing our mayor to enter to an agreement with ALDOT?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Harper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hayes. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Acker.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item C is our consent agenda. We have 15 items. They range from minutes of the previous meeting, bill listings, travel and training for various employees. Of course, PO requisitions, one in particular is our, our body cameras for our officers. That, I think that will finish out the remaining 15 out of our police department, so wanted to make that note. 15 items on our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve as printed?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Harper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hayes. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Acker.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item nine, reports of special committees to council. We have none to report. Item 10, public hearings. We have none on the agenda. Item 11, city administrators' business. Mr. Collins.
Mr. President, members of council, Mayor Hernan, I sent out electronic notice last week. I placed before each of you a paper notice tonight of the special call meeting of the city council scheduled for this coming Thursday, September 24th at 12 noon. The agenda for that meeting has been established. We have it before you. That meeting is obviously open to the public as any other city council meeting would be. There will be no pre-meeting. The meeting will start at noon in this room. The agenda is a resolution filling the council vacancy in District Four. Our consideration of candidates for council District Four by the city council. And the second item will be a resolution electing a president pro tem, or vice president of the city council. Councilman Acker currently fills that seat. Unfortunately, his last night on the council is tonight, so we'll need to fill that vacancy by a member of council. And then the last thing I have before you under city administrators' business, and this will not be for action of the city council, but as an update for where we are, and that will be the police chief position and where we move forward with that since we last discussed that position in our work session on September 10th. Again, that's at 12 noon. It is open to the public as any other meeting. It'll start in this room. And that will be the agenda. We expect it to be a very short meeting at that time. That's all I have for you.
Thank you. Item 12, departmental business. We have one department that's reporting, chief marshal, and I know in our pre-meeting you gave a great, a great update on some very important and very, some great news in terms of Northport's ISO rating, and I don't want to diminish what the city, especially your department, has done. So I'm gonna ask that you maybe give us a brief overview and I'll help, because I've got your information up here.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, mayor and honorable counsel. ISO for the fire service usually creates a little stress and tension in our department, but what the ISO is, is Insurance Service Office, and they are charged with evaluating communities across the United States on their fire suppression capabilities. To date, they have rated 48,885 departments across the United States. It's a very comprehensive analysis. It took ours 13 months before they got back with us. They were here in July of 2014. They assign a rating, which they call the Public Protection Classification. It's a rating between 1 to 10, 1 being the best and 10 being the worst. ISO looks at everything. It's very comprehensive. They look at your coverage area, your population, types of sizes of structures, then determines the grade through three areas, and those three areas are 50% of it is the fire department. And basically, everything we do from community outreach to personnel to training to the way we're documenting our equipment that's allocated, the way we respond to our resources to the calls, 40% of it is water supply. They look at our system capabilities. They talked with Larry extensively on what water is available, or maintenance, our testing of hydrants and that type of stuff. And then 10% is emergency communication, basically our dispatch center and our backup areas of that. But usually, ISO evaluates every five years. It's been since 2004 since Northport has received a rating, a PPC rating. At that time, we were a Class Four. We were a little worried because we were within one percentage point of being a Class Five. And as Councilman Acker has said, we are, our new rating is a Class Three. That puts us in the top 8% of the fire departments in the United States. That's a good thing. What is this used for? What does it mean to us? It's used for insurance companies. All this information is given out to the insurance companies, and they use it to, for underwriting purposes, and also to establish insurance premiums for both homeowners and commercial businesses. What does it really mean for Northport? A change from a four to a three. For me, it means a lower classification historically has meant less fire loss, and I'm all about that. Commercial businesses could, will see lower insurance premises, premiums, excuse me, estimated between 7 and 18%. Homeowners, depending on the carriers, will see a little bit lower, I mean, not as high a percentage, but they could also see lower premiums depending on who their carrier is. And to me, it's a big recruitment tool for economic development. New businesses are generally attracted to cost savings, and this is definitely one for them. To me, this is a positive return on investment that the community has made, and this mayor and council, and this administration have made, making Northport a better place to live, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Chief, and thanks to Lair, and of course, Chief Burton, I think all three departments were working very closely for 13 months to get that ISO rating to a level where we can all kind of be proud of, especially taking 13 months and getting it to a Class Three says a lot about our city department, so thank you, Chief. Item 13 is public comment. We have a few citizens that are signed up to speak. I'll start from the top. Michelle Thomas Walker. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Cheryl Thomas Walker, and I'm the daughter of Clemmie and Eloise Thomas, and our address is 1803. and our address is eighteen oh three Nineteenth Street, Northport. And I'm standing before the council and the members here this afternoon to say that we are in support of the Martin Luther King Improvement. As the gentleman just stated about improvement in the city of Northport, we do stand in support of that, thank you.
Thank you. Our second citizen, Ms. Elizabeth Standard. Ms. Elizabeth, would you state your name and address for the record?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Standard, I live at twenty-one oh five Twenty-second Avenue, and I've lived in District One for four years. I just wanted to invite y'all to a potluck. Northport neighbors thought it'd be fun to have a potluck, it's October twenty-fifth, it's at the Northport Community Center, it's on, the one on Park Street, and I'm hoping to leave, it's Sunday afternoon, I'm hoping to leave flyers in your office and hope you all will attend, invite your constituents, business owners, neighbors, family event. And I will have flyers for anyone interested when the meeting's over, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Steven Schwab, please state your name and address for the record.
Steven Schwab, I live at twenty-five Twenty-Fifth Street in Northport. It was approximately two years ago that I first spoke to the city council about the traffic situation on Fifth Street. And of course, at that time, at about, well, what caused me to address you was that a few days before, at approximately six forty-five in the morning, a car attempted to jump the line of commuter traffic right in front of my house, went into the opposite lane, of course, it's a two-lane street, thereby inviting a head-on collision. The car, there was a car coming in the opposite direction, so the person who violated the traffic laws attempted to get back in line, lost control of the car, car hit the curb, rolled up the embankment, hitting the porch of the house across the street, burst into flames. Fortunately, no one was killed, but the accident put at risk the life of the little girl waiting for the school bus on my side of the street and the, also the life of the son of the city engineer who was coming out of the Williamson Cemetery after walking his dog there. Unfortunately, the traffic situation has steadily gotten worse, not better. I thought Paul Humphries of Billy's would be here tonight, but shortly after he spoke to you at the last meeting, of course, a car traveling at a higher rate of speed hit the sign in front of his restaurant that had been made by the blacksmith. If that sign hadn't been there, I've been down to look at it, both Mr. Humphries and I think that the car would have probably killed people sitting out on the patio. I understand that approximately twenty thousand vehicles pass in front of my house every day, every twenty-four hour period, so I tested that. Last Tuesday afternoon, I sat on my front porch for a half an hour from two-thirty to three P.M., certainly not a rush hour situation. In those thirty minutes, I counted two-hundred and forty-eight vehicles that passed my house. I would estimate that approximately one-fourth of them were exceeding the speed limit. I also counted three semi trucks, none of which were engaged in local deliveries. Fifth Street is not a designated highway, but I'm gonna tell you, it sure feels like one. Why can't you do something definitive about this horrible and dangerous situation? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Ms. Diana, I think you're signed up as well, can you state your name and address as well?
I'm Diana Schwab, and I live at the same address, twenty-five Twenty-Fifth Street. I had an eye-opening experience this past week. I went to my first meeting of the Northport Heritage Society on Park Street. It was an ice cream social, and I learned a lot about the importance of the society in downtown Northport. They own a number of venues all the way from Main Street to Airport Road, and those are public venues, including the Farmer's Market, which is also used on Sundays for a flea market. There will be other kinds of traffic in the future going along that road, and it won't be speeding traffic. I think it's important to keep that vision in mind, which brings me to another question. I asked them when they were going to be able to host a costumed open house at Shirley, which is what I remember as one of the attractions when I came here at Shirley House. And they said they had not received any information about a safety inspection, and my question is, when will and how will that be done? And is it going to be, is it possible to do this year? And I don't know what the city council's plans for that are, but I was quite impressed with the property that is owned and managed by the Heritage Society and the plans for Van de Graaff Park at the corner of Fifth and Airport Road, which will be a dog park, a lake with rowboats, it will be a camping park. I mean, that's going to change the profile of downtown Northport considerably. But it would be helpful for them to know when the safety inspection will be done, when they can host a costume dog in the house, so, thank you.
One more resident to, has signed up to speak. Wah wah, is that the way, is that, is that right? Okay, as we'll say wah wah. State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Kenneth Walters, forty-eight thirteen Hollins Avenue, Stewart Park, Northport, Alabama. First of all, I'd like to tell Mr. Acker, we certainly appreciate you being the solid rock of this council, you really have, and I know that. And your direction has led this council in the right direction, and hopefully ever who replaces you can fill your shoes, they can't. We got senior people over like, well Hollywood's not gonna be here either. So, he's not gonna be here either, so he's not gonna be the senior man. But we really appreciate the good job you've done, because I know you have done a good job. I know every one of you have done a good job, except one of you hasn't done a good job. Some have not learned yet to get up here and try to stall the budget. I don't understand, when y'all put the budget together, if I've got items or I've got questions, you know, you can at least find out what we're spending the money for. I don't know, you know, this council right here, I can tell you like it is, y'all give the citizens and these council people more knowledge of what's going on in the city than the city of Tuscaloosa ever has, and darn sure, what the county does, I can tell you that right now. So far as knowledge, if you come here, you're gonna find out basically what's going on and everything. But I just want to tell you that I really appreciate the good job you've done, Acker. And it sounds like the Heritage Society is getting warm, we need to invite them, because I've got a real good deal for them, we can give them a house, and then they can take care of that house. And I know some of y'all don't wanna give it up, some of y'all do wanna give it up. We don't have the money, I keep telling y'all, the biggest problem in Northport is we don't have the dad gum resources everybody does. You know, Tuscaloosa sitting over on a pot of gold, well hearted and they're starting to sweat now because the coal mines ain't gonna be just pumping millions of dollars in over there. We've always been limited on resources over here, and you know, y'all have done the best you can do with what you got, but all y'all have done a good job. And I also want to tell you this right here, Thursday, I don't know who we're gonna put up for police chief, I just hope one thing, it is internal with our department. I don't wanna go get a used, anybody over Tuscaloosa, we've got a good man, we've got some good people on the staff. If we take our people and we don't train them to be the chief, I don't care if he's a brand-new man, we're not doing our job. And that tells me that when we elevate people in our staff, we're doing the right thing. And Brother Morrison just gave us that chief report, it just seemed that we're doing the right thing over here with the departmental heads and everything. So, you know, I'll be here Thursday, so make sure y'all do the right thing. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Item fourteen is mayor and council members' business, I'll start with District One, the Honorable Councilwoman Judy Hayes.
I want to thank Steve again for all the hard work he's done for the council and all the help he's given me and probably, I imagine others in the council. And I also want to thank the council for their hard work and support, and the staff who are amazing, and we could not do what we do for citizens without y'all. I want to thank the constituents in District One and for their support, continued support of me.
Thank you, District Two, under my business, a couple, a couple things, again, Steve, it's, it's gonna be hard filling your shoes, I know you're getting ready to start fishing, you're not gonna tell us where your fishing hole's at, but we'll just, we'll have to follow you in your truck one day and find out where the good fishing hole's at. Leadership will be surely missed, and I know, like I said, you're gonna really enjoy having more time with your family, so I appreciate all the hard work you've shown over the years, and I appreciate you. The Hunter Creek Bridge project, it's ongoing, and I think it's on track to be completed in late October. Ms. Swan, I think, am I right in saying that?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, if you've seen the, the work that's going on, if you ever pass McFarland where the trailers are located, the old Steve's Bar and Grill, that, that's actually getting redone, and council's done a great job in providing some, some monies to get that done. So that should be end of October. I wanted to thank Chief Burton and Ms. Flor Gay and Brooke, of course, for their hard work in the last twenty or thirty days, I've been really pressing their three departments, and they have just been performing outstanding, and you saw on the agenda, Ms. Gay had probably ten if she didn't have one, either a lot that needed to be cut or a house that needed to be torn down, so her staff has just been going wide open, and Brooke the same way, so, you know, I really appreciate those two young ladies. And Chief Burton, thank you so much, I wanted to say that over the past six months, when I, when we get our reports, certain crimes in District Two has been reduced by about four and a half percent, so I appreciate that. Please let your officers know that what we're doing is working, and I think the citizens of District Two, we really appreciate that, so again, thanks Chief Burton and Flor and Brooke. And that's, that's all that I have under my business, Councilman Sullivan.
Two things, I want to thank Fire Chief Marshall for the ISO rating, certainly good news, I appreciate that. Again, Steve, appreciate all the work, you're certainly gonna be missed, look forward to fishing with you one day, hopefully. But I do appreciate all the hard work, I've leaned on you a lot, and certainly thank you.
District Four, Councilman Acker, make it a good one, make it a good one.
My final one.
The floor is yours.
I've been planning this a long time, there's few people I wanna say something to. But I don't want to give them any credibility when there's none, do you? Want to recognize my brother, County Commissioner Stan Acker and his family back there, thanks for coming to support me, and my family that all came, I appreciate y'all coming to support me, I wasn't expecting all that. And I appreciate all the kind words that's been said, and that's, it's very humbling to be honest with you, and all the things, I don't know how true some of them are, but I do, and I appreciate District Four, it's a great district, and whomever y'all appoint, we'll have a good district to work with. So, at any rate, without further ado, I'll be retired from the city council. Have to run for my brothers when he, when he goes to the state. Thank y'all again, though, and I do appreciate everything, thank you.
District Five, Councilman Harper.
I can't speak after that, thank you, Councilman Acker, we'll leave it with you.
The Honorable Mayor Bobby Hernan.
Thank you, Mr. President, as I mentioned before, before the opening prayer, please keep Paul Hubbard and his family in your prayers. Also, Wednesday morning at seven fifteen, at the flagpole outside Northport Police Department, we're gonna be having a prayer for our first responders this, this coming Wednesday at seven fifteen A.M., if you can come out, please do. The ISO rating that Chief Marshall was talking about, you know, it sounded like a lot of words, but that is a lot of hard work and great, great results for the city of Northport. Just shows the direction that this city's been going in, to go from a almost five, which is terrible, to a three, which is very, very positive. And it's like you said, the top eight or ten percent in the country as far as ISO ratings, it's just a tremendous, tremendous thing that's happened to our city. And then the rescue runs that we're gonna start participating in just shows how much Northport has, has grown, how much it's a team player, not only, you know, in the county, but the entire West Alabama region. And I really appreciate the Fire Department, the Police Department, all the public works officials. And Steve, once again, I appreciate you, bud.
Item fifteen is adjournment, ladies and gentlemen, Steve, you want to adjourn the meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Mr. President.
Whoa, whoa, you just messed it up, see that?
Before we get into the, not to interrupt.
I can tell you about anything I want to, no.
Yeah, that's right. But I can tell you, I can tell you about anything I want to, too, I, I got ninety seconds.
Civil service.
Just a reminder, I want to thank, again, Steve and his family and everyone else for coming out tonight. We do have a small reception in the room across the hall. For those of you who like to stay, we would appreciate you doing that. Please feel free to make yourself at home, all the staff will be available. Elected officials, Steve will be there, and just thank you for, for coming out tonight, and please make sure you take time to at least step across the hall and get something before you go. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, had a motion by Councilman Acker, I'll make the second, all in favor, please say yes. All opposed, same sign, we are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. David Kemp, can I see you before we leave?